If we have a quorum, we'll call it workshop session order.
Our workshop topic tonight, Mayor Council, relates to rather a large piece of art that sits out in front of the building, Slicker Shy, as well as discussion of public art in general. Councilman Ferguson did request this item be put on your agenda, and Mr. Hunky is ready to present his information.
Mayor Council, I've been accused in the past of going through slides way too quickly, so if I'm doing that, just throw something at me and I'll slow down. But in the interest of protecting your time, I'll try to be brief.
I heard it.
Just briefly, what I want to go through here is some slides about Slicker Shy itself, the status and potential future of it, what the options might be if council wants to pursue purchasing of that particular sculpture, and get some potential direction from council. And then we're going to spend the rest of the presentation talking about public art in general, and what types of public art programs our survey cities have and other cities have, and what options might exist if council wants to pursue a public art program for Louisville, in particular with the Blue Ribbon Committee forming soon, this might be a very relevant time to look at that. So Slicker Shy itself, you've seen the statue out front. It's by artist Herb Mignery, who is a very well-known, well-respected Western artist. The sculpture is eighteen feet tall, ten foot across at the base, weighs nearly three tons, so very large piece. You might remember when we brought it in, it took a very heavy-duty crane to put it into place, some good video and photos of that. Now Herb himself, he is an award-winning member of Cowboy Artists of America and the National Sculpture Society of America. He has monuments on display in Nebraska, Missouri, Hawaii, you see the list there, Colorado, New Mexico, Texas, South Dakota. He also, on a smaller scale, if you ever watched the Academy of Country Music Awards, the little pioneer award they give out to their, you know, true legends of country music, that is a Herb work also. So he is very well-known in the art world, especially the Western art world, for the work that he does. The sculpture itself-
Slicker Shy was originally commissioned by the Adams Mark Hotel in downtown Dallas back in 1998, and it stayed there for ten years in their lobby. If you ever saw it in their lobby, probably was not the best place to put it. It kind of got hidden just where it was placed, but it was a cornerstone of their branding of their decor. They re-flagged in 2008 as a Sheraton, and did a $90 million renovation and decided they were no longer going to be a cowboy hotel, they were going to be an upscale downtown Ermen hotel, and Slicker Shy did not fit their plans. So they removed it and put it up for sale. Slicker Shy came here about a year later, and then we put it on display in 2010, but it came here essentially on consignment, an opportunity to put it on display so potential buyers can view it, look at it, see it in place. It was installed in July of 2010. OTBA submitted a request to council that we put it out front. They offered to get donations for the installation. You'll see there, they actually did, J.C. Commercial was working on the art center at the time, came over and poured the base for us. North Texas Crane saw an article in the newspaper and called us up, and he said, "I'm going to bring out a crane and an operator, when do you need us?" So local business stepped up. And then Sculpture Works, David Wiegand is here by the way, Sculpture Works oversaw the installation and paid for the installation cost and continues to pay for the cleaning services. So it was a cost-free loan of a three-ton sculpture in front of City Hall. Now since that time, it's become pretty visible. There's some examples here on the screen, you can see it's been on the cover of A Phone Book, also is prominently featured in the Chamber Directory of Community Guide, it's on the walls of at least three restaurants, and there might be others, these are just the three that I've eaten at, they're all in 3040s, they're close to home. In case you're wondering, that's Jason's Deli on the left, that's Applebee's in the middle, the fact they put a big apple over it probably gave that away, and then Pizza Inn on the far right. So it is a fairly recognizable image around town. We do have people stop by every day taking pictures of the statue or of themselves with the statue. So it has some notoriety, some recognition within the community. In terms of the value, the owner, Sheraton, previously Adams Mark, has not publicly said how much they paid to commission the work. But their asking price is set at $450,000. They generated what's called a replacement cost, and that's detailed in your backup material, of $325,000. Essentially, that's what it would cost to purchase the materials. I thought you were something. That's what it would cost to purchase the materials and for the artist to make the new mold in order to recreate the sculpture. So if it were crushed by meteorite, it would take about three and a quarter to replace it. And the owners have agreed to sell it to us at that replacement cost, discounted from their asking price. The question then becomes, what is the statue actually worth on the open market? Since it's never been sold, you don't really have a history of that, it's never gone through auction. So we did go out and retain Pam Campbell, she's a certified art appraiser based in Fort Worth. Her credentials are in your packet along with her appraisal, but she has a lengthy history of appraisal work, especially on Western sculpture and Western art, including monument pieces. And at the end of her report, she states that if you were to purchase this work directly from the artist, it'd be 400, 450,000, so around the asking price. If you were to go to a broker or an art dealer, it'd be between 600 and 650 by her estimate. So at the end, she said, and you'll see the quote there, "The current asking price of 325 for Herb Mignery's Slicker Shy appears to be below the market value." We offer that just to say, we don't really know, but this particular appraiser gave us this estimate of value. And her methodology and background, her methodology and research material is in your packet also. So then you get to the question of, if we wanted to buy it for $325,000, how could we do it? I searched my sofa, came up short. But there are mechanisms available, and both of the options that we're going to talk about here involve the hotel occupancy tax. By state law, you can spend up to 15% of hot revenues every year on art support. You can see the details of the law there. When it talks about art support, it lists pretty much every possible type of art you can imagine, but the word sculpture is in there. And some cities do use their hot funds toward public art, at least a portion. What we do with that is we fund the arts grants, $168,000 worth of arts grants to, I think it's eight organizations now, or seven? Eight organizations, and those are portioned your annual budget. And we also pay for some operating expenses at the art center that is supportive of the arts there, specifically in terms of tourism, because we do have activities at the art center that bring overnight visitors. So we've got that 15% we could be using, and I will tell you, in most years, we do not. In fact, we've never reached that 15% cap. Part of that is deliberate, we don't want to budget exactly 15%, and then our revenue that year comes in low. For example, back in 2008, the travel market just tanked for about three years, and our receipts dropped by around $300,000. If we had budgeted the full amount, we'd have had to, I don't want to go to the ballet or the symphony and say, "Give us back your money, you can't have it." First off, they might not give it to me, and secondly, it just doesn't really look good. So we always try to leave a little bit of a buffer there, generally budgeting around 10% to 12% in the art support range. Any unspent hot revenue goes into the hot fund reserve, where we have about $4 million right now. So if that 15% is designated for arts and rolls in there, it's staff's position that that money should still be eligible for an art-related expense. Now I'll add a caveat here, since I'm sitting by the attorney, I want to make sure I get this right, so if I get it wrong, please correct me. Okay, just, okay. You can talk about that in close if you have any questions on that. So we have the 15% cap, and if you look at the numbers on the chart, they're kind of small, but I'll summarize it for you. From 2007, '08 to current fiscal year, if you look at the amount of the arts cap that was not spent in each of those fiscal years, it ranges from 104,000 back in '07, '08, to a low of 45, 48,000 this year, but it totals $488,000. So if we consider that art-designated money to be still eligible for art expenses, that would give you almost half a million dollars that could be used out of the hot reserves, out of the $4 million reserve that we have. Repeats what it is there, if we use the half million, even if we use all 488 today for public art, it would still leave a little more than three and a half million in that reserve. The option would exist to simply purchase the sculpture out of that 488, spend 325 of it, that still leaves 163,000 for other opportunities that might come along, and it would be paid and done. One advantage of that, if you again look at the numbers here, you'll see that the hot revenue changes every year, it's not consistent. We're in an upward trend right now, we've had downward trends in the past, and we probably will have a downward trend again at some point in the future. So as opposed to buying it out of current year's revenues, when you might wind up falling short at the end of the year, this at least, you know you didn't go over that 15% cap, you don't have to give anything back. Another alternative is to pull a portion of the purchase price, a percentage that council would decide, and pay that now out of hot fund reserve, and then staff and donors in the community could go out and try to raise the remainder of the purchase price out in the private sector. The risk there is if that doesn't happen, it could place an expectation on a future council that they have to pony up. Always a risk with, of course, anything you do. So there's two options there, there's the buy it all now, there's the buy it on installment. We've not actually spoken to the seller to see if they're willing to do that, but we can certainly have that discussion if that's the direction council wanted to go. So in terms of Slicker Shy, the next steps are to decide whether you want to make Slicker Shy a permanent part of the City Hall grounds, and if so, what funding option you would like for us to use. And I think at this point, I'm going to pause for a minute.
Okay, so the fund, the thing, talk about the hot money, you said we need to go closed session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go in closed session.
For consultation with the attorney.
We'll go in closed session.
James, I'm sorry.
Everyone step out.
Yeah, James. Even interactive public art, a speaker square or a poetry square can be considered a public art. Because we think public art, don't just think a sculpture, a fancy bench or a, the way you treat the pavement or a bus stop, those can be a public art. Here's just some examples, Irving's Mustangs, the Big Sam statue in Huntsville, you're probably familiar with those. The statue on the left outside the Ullis Library, these are kind of reflective of the communities they're in. The Woodlands Deer, Arlington has quite a bit of music-related art. These are more abstract, more contemporary, that's Fort Worth on the left, Mesquite on the right. Here on the bottom left out of Fort Worth, you see how the ground can be used, the ground treatment can be in artwork. In that case, the bench is a nice bench, but it's the pattern on the ground that makes it art. Lubbock, Texas Tech campus, they have these weather vanes, they don't really need, because if the wind's blowing, you know it, but they're very artistic. You've got the bench in Lake Travis, that is a functional bench, it just looks different than a regular bench. And the one above is actually an ad, but they painted the bench, and so we put it in there. This is in downtown Houston, this shows how, even if you have, don't have, a single signature piece, a collection of smaller pieces, whether they reflect your community or just reflect art in general, can be effective. In downtown Houston, they have multiple works scattered around the downtown, right outside the convention centers where you can start, at the George R. Brown Convention Center. And some are historic, some are abstract, some are sculptures, some are colors, and they draw a lot of people that live there and a lot that visit there. This is out of Austin, that's a mural, they're actually restoring it in this picture, murals can be a very big one, they sometimes have more maintenance costs, but they're cheaper to put up at the beginning. And this is Amarillo, you might have seen those. This is public art, it's actually interactive public art. If you've ever been there, you're encouraged to bring a spray pan, paint, spray paint can, and add your own touch to it. My name has probably been erased by now, but it was there a few weeks ago. Benefits of public art, it does create, according to the people who research, a positive economic impact. Their major corporations have said they look at that. When Volkswagen chose Chattanooga, their corporate execs said the arts environment was a big factor. When Boeing chose Chicago for its headquarters in 2001, they specifically mentioned the art in that area for their employees. National Governors Association did a study in 2012 that found a healthy arts presence serves as a draw for visitors and boosts your tourism-related economic impacts, and recommended that cities and states enact policies and programs for art. And then the third one down, they also can attract new residents. That same study by the National Governors Association, you see the underlying quote, found that the most talented individuals are migrating to a small number of cities that are most likely to maximize innovation. Identify culture and arts as key indicators. This almost comes word for word out of our 2025 responses from the survey, from the committee members, that that's something they want to pay attention to. It also does create connection with people, which is what a community is, what a city is. I'm not going to read all the details to you, but these are various groups, architects and private foundations and arts groups, that have come in and said that public art helps to define a community and helps to pull people together and give them a shared experience. The bottom one's kind of interesting there, they did a survey of 43,000 people in 43 cities, presumably 1,000 in each city, and asked them what it was about their city that they would rank those in terms of attachment to a community, and social offerings, openness, welcomeness, aesthetics, and art ranked higher than education, safety, and economy, in terms of forming an attachment to your community. Might not be higher in terms of where you choose, once you're there, you're more attached to it, at least according to those results. And it does have a positive community image, again, right out of 2025, that communities that have more public art are generally viewed by the public as a more appealing place to live and do business. That people identify cities strongly by their visual appeal. For example, St. Louis, you think of the arch. New York City, you think of the Statue of Liberty, and so forth. In New York City, they did a survey of New York City visitors, and the majority of tourists said that it was culture and the arts they remembered most about their visit in New York City. So values, not just in terms of feel-good, but also economic. Selecting public art, lots of ways you can do it. You can accept proposals from the community, you can go out and solicit proposals, say, "We have a spot, tell us what you would do with it." You can purchase artwork that's already made, go out and say, "I like this, I like that." Or you can commission an artist and say, "We want to reflect this particular image, we want to have this particular idea or concept, tell us how you would do it." And then they show you their idea, and you pay them for that. For example, the Ferguson bronze that was discussed a while back was a commissioned work. They found an artist, showed him photos, described the man, and the artist came up with a mocket of the statue. So all of these are viable. How do you select it? The council can choose. That means each individual piece comes to you for an up or down vote. You can hire, pardon me, appoint a committee, such as, we could use the Arts Advisory Committee, that's not one of the duties now, it could be added, and have that committee either give them the decision-making authority, or they bring recommendations to you. You can have staff do it, that is our least preferable of these three options. But we do have some people at the art center, they are very familiar with performing arts, they are also good at visual arts, and they could do that if you so direct it. Funding, it can cost as much as you want to spend. You can spend hundreds, you can spend hundreds of thousands, you can spend millions, we're not certainly recommending the millions. Smaller pieces can be a few thousand dollars. The sculpture you saw of the man sitting on the bench in front of the Ullis Library was a $19,000 bronze, and it was commissioned. On the other hand, some of the big ones you see, like the Mustangs in Los Colinas, the cattle in downtown Dallas can be hundreds of thousands, even million or more. Capital projects set aside is one way you can fund public art. This is the state law that says, and I want to point out, remember this where it says that you can do a percentage not to exceed 1% of the cost of a construction project. Essentially, the city would say, "We're going to build a new public facility, and we're going to set aside a percentage of that total budget for public art at that facility." Remember that 1%, we're going to come back to that in a minute. Impact fees, some cities have used them, Frisco in particular, it's doubtful we have enough major private projects coming along to make much of an impact, but it is an option. You can do an annual or one-time budget appropriation, now to be their hot fund or general fund, and just say, "Once a year, we're going to put money aside and build a fund, or this one time, we're going to fund it." A number of cities have done that. Corporate support is always the most popular, it's also the hardest to do. Irving and Richardson have been successful largely because they have a very large commercial base of corporate tenants. Most cities have been far less successful in that regard. Crowdsourcing is something we've looked at for smaller projects, that's online, you basically say, "Here's your project I want to do, does the world want to give us money?" And it's amazing what they'll give money for. We're actually looking at using this for a fairly small piece of work at the art center, in the 20 to 40,000 range, to see how it works. If it works, we'll keep trying it. We checked our 12 survey cities, 10 of the 12 have a formal public art program, eight of them are actively purchasing artwork with dedicated funds, one of those sources we talked about, or a couple of others, that we will hit momentarily. Plano had a program, they put it on hold, and they're just doing maintenance right now, they bought so much, they've got to try and catch up. Irving has a public acquisition art program, but they fund it as part of the art center budget. So the art center says, "Here's my budget, and this request includes X amount for public art." So the council doesn't allocate it directly, they allocate it through the art center. Garland does not have an acquisition program, but they do accept donations at the Granville Art Center, and Carrollton, as best we know, does not have a public art program at this time. So out of our survey cities, we're in the minority on that. Here's just description of Denton, here's where you can see that 1% come back up. They created a separate fund in 2006 for public art with a balance, and then they started adding to it from then on, I mean, they're, I'm sorry, they're not the same ones. They started adding to it after that with a minimum of 2.4% every year of their hotel tax revenue that goes into that account. They also have a process in their abatements where a developer or a business is approved for a tax abatement, if they agree, they can get up to 5% additional abatement if they agree that half of that will be dedicated for public art. So if you give them a 30% abatement, they can get 35% if 2.5% goes to public art. Mesquite does have a committee that's assigned through the Mesquite Arts Council that reports to the council, council approves all purchases. Their funding comes through capital improvements. I showed you earlier the state law that says you can dedicate up to 1% of any project over a quarter million dollars. Mesquite, by ordinance, dedicates 2%. We asked them, and a couple other cities, how they're able to do that, and we really had a hard time finding a good answer. It's something that if council wanted to pursue capital project allocation, we would need to research that further. Our interpretation is the 1% is pretty clear in the law, but when we called the state and asked them about it, they said, "Oh, that only applies to the state," even though the law says cities. So there's some confusion. We would want to research it before we can make a recommendation. They also use state and federal grants, including CDVG money and transportation enhancement funds. They do require any artwork be unique, original, no duplicates. And then here's Frisco, they also use capital between 1% and 2%. And you can see there, they use similarly, essentially the same process you've seen. So they use capital allocations, including grant projects. If the grant program allows them to request it, they include a public art request in their grant application. Last slide. So the direction at this point, you see the three points, we need to know first off, does council have any desire for a public art program? If so, if no, then we're done. If you do, then we need to see if you want us to develop a policy. We don't have a policy right now, there's one that was drafted a few years ago but not adopted, so we could pretty quickly come back with something for you, for discussion and consideration. And then lastly, funding, if you want to do it, how do you want to fund it? There's a lot of different options, the main ones I showed you, hot funding, capital projects, grants, and so forth. But if you want to do it, we just need to get some direction in concurrence with the policy of how you want to pay for it.
So-
One question, then we're going to go to the regular agenda, and then we'll come back if we have time.
So, quick question, what makes this different from what we've done in the past is, from a, taking a percentage and holding it in an account perspective? What makes a difference is that we intentionally have done it, whereas historically, we've just said, "Well, we didn't spend that much," and now it's in the general hot fund.
I can't tell you that was intentionally done, I will tell you that the money's available because we didn't do the 50%, and it's real unbalanced.
Right, but in these projects here, where we set out and we say 2.5%,
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And we put it in this, then that counts.
Yeah, I noticed that Denton has a bond election in November, it's actually part of their bond election. It says exactly how much money they can spend on arts related to street construction projects, related to park construction projects, so it's very specific.
Denton actually allocates into their budget each year out of the hot fund, and they just set aside a separate fund, and it just grows until they use it, and then it shrinks and grows. Most of the others, we found, are going through kind of a little bit more fluidity, the capital projects and so forth.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to the regular agenda, and then if we've any second time, then we'll come back and have some more discussion. We've got a whole agenda to talk about, see? Item one is public hearing.
Is that fun?
My wife-
And I might want to answer. I like to sleep at night, in my own bed. Whoever, you said you had a question? I thought you said you had a question.
No, I thought they had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
His wife had a question.
I got you. No questions out of one? Item two is public hearing.
In your backup, here's a sheet that does a summary, it looks like this. And there's a typo on the grand total, it says 517,116, should be 587,116. It is stated correctly everywhere else in the memo, it's just that one total. So I just wanted to make sure you had the corrected reporting.
But it's not in the comments, right?
No, sir. It's correct in the comments.
Okay. Any questions? Item three?
Excuse me, on item four, do we have certified electricians employed by the city?
We do not. So they can do minor work, but anything that requires a certified electrician would have to bring in a third party, that's what this is.
Pardon me?
We have a master electrical inspector, but their scope of job is not to not do electrical work.
I understand. Thank you, Mayor.
Item four? Item five? I get a question. Is this something we want to look at table-leaf right now, because of some other projects we've got going?
This really is just an assignment of the interest in a concession agreement, it will still be managed by evil God.
It's new ownership.
It's new ownership.
Assignment cannot be unrefined, we're the panelists. We're going to close this.
So we couldn't table this, or?
I'd like to talk till you close it out.
So could we put it at the end of the agenda, pull it from?
Okay, I can do that, we could come back here before we, before the, yeah, then come back here. Okay, let's do that. Does everybody have that?
Yep.
And I'd probably be able to do it like you said, move it to the end, that way it doesn't push up right here. Item six. Item seven, so we're going to need to pull that, that's only a percentage.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item six, item seven? If you had something on that, really, speed limit.
It still boggles my mind how this happens. If everybody knew that they could just drive like crazy when that road, it would go up.
Some of the road you can't drive.
Well, that's true.
Item eleven? Where's K?
Some of the road you can't drive.
Well, that's true.
Item eleven? Where's Tim? I got a question. Tim, and here you go. There you are, Tim.
Why are we doing this?
If I understand, if I'm reading this correctly, we're deleting the need or the requirement, I should say, the requirement to sprinkler the house that provide, that house and provide for the care of elderly clients, not, not a elderly person living there, but a house is specifically operating to care for the elderly. We're eliminating the need to sprinkle that?
No, not entirely, just in the attic space. By local amendment, we require attics to be sprinkled in apartments, hotels, motels, and these group-type homes.
Right.
They're single-family dwellings, so in order to put an attic system into a single-family dwelling is very, very, very expensive. And we felt that the need, the benefit that we would realize from it, which really doesn't, doesn't pay off in the cost, for the cost of it. The interior of the home and the living spaces will still be protected with the fire sprinkler system. But that's a, that's a residential system which is relatively inexpensive to put a commercial syst-, or attic system in, it has to be a commercial system.
Or have the commercial system...
Yeah, there's no residential standard for attic protection only.
Okay.
So we'll still have it where the people are living and... Habitating, it just won't protect the attic, is what we're proposing.
We had several that have tried to come into town and have not been able to, because it's...
The ones that are currently here have the 1%.
They should, I can't say for sure whether they have or not, Mayor.
If they were in place.
When the ordinance came into place in 2006, they, they've told us it's 30 to 40 thousand dollars just for the attic. And it's, we feel that's kind of, kind of onerous.
But there is habitable sprinklers.
Yeah, habitable living portions of it, the house will be completely protected.
My mother lived in two of them, and they both had the sprinklers, and they were both since, what'd you say, 96?
I'm sorry.
What'd you say the code was, 96?
2006.
We put it in in 2006, we grouped these in with...
They're the newest since then, they're those over by the...
The new city.
We're how many?
About a dozen right now.
And the others sprinkled in the attic, the ones that come in since 2006?
I can't say for sure, Mr. Vaughn, but I'd have to check, I don't know.
If they came in after 2006, we would have required them to...
But, but the specific is a single-family residence.
Correct. Not a commercial building.
Not, not a commercial, like...
I understand, but no, no, she's living two of the single-family residents. There's, that's getting more and more common, I think Tim will tell you, they're more and more common throughout the city, and they're located just in ordinary neighborhoods.
Right, right kitty-corner to me and my...
They have certain restrictions on vehicles and stuff, they can be parked there and stuff like that.
Right, because it would be a home occupation.
Right, and then, but then in the past, we've required under sprinkler the attic. If you don't think it's necessary, okay. Okay, item twelve?
I haven't heard otherwise, I'm assuming that we've had, had no revelations, nothing brand-new that's come our way that's gonna solve this issue.
Are you gonna respond to that, or are you ready to make?
We had a nice meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, we had, we had a good meeting with several of the occupants down there in that area, some of the, the owners of properties, and some of the tenants of the properties, and we had some good discussions, and I think we, we came up with some solutions that were not exactly what they wanted, but yet they understood, basically, that it was something beyond our control as far as if we're gonna get Cowan pushed through, if, no, not Cowan, I'm sorry, if we're gonna get Valley Ridge to go through, which we explained the need to have Valley Ridge go through, that this had to be done, and it's not something we choose to do, it's something we have to do, that, that crossing has to be closed. And so we, we added some things, we added some, we're gonna do some additional streetlighting, quite a bit of additional streetlighting for them.
Signage.
Signage for them, we're talking about signage at different intersections, Valley Ridge, Mill, and On Up Mill, and then at Mill where they turn down Jones, maybe get a electronic reader board and put up there, and have their names going across it, up there on a regular basis, so they're getting advertising for their businesses and that type of stuff. What about the bus stop? The bus stop's gonna go, no longer stop on Cowan, on Cowan, they're gonna go in...
They're actually gonna go into the...
The mobile home, and the school district has signed up on that, and they're gonna go in and make a big loop, and come all the way around it, and we're gonna redesign with the help of DCTA and JIMs, we're gonna redesign the intersection at Mill and Jones, so that it will be widened, so that they can get motorhomes turn that corner there to get them back in there if they need to.
I thought we had a very good meeting, the group was representative of the different, you know, businesses and residents in the neighborhood. Jim Klein was with us, the mayor was with us, and we had a, a very good exchange, and while I think they would have liked us to have said, yes, we're really Cowan open, in the end, I do believe they understood why we can, and that we are gonna do everything we can to make sure their businesses are, are not impacted, and they have exposure in marketing.
Okay, thank you.
See, I'm not saying everybody's 100% happy, don't get me wrong, but we did Jones a long time ago, remember it? What do you call it, Kumar Boulevard?
Yes.
Yeah, next door to it, there, it's kinda...
Looks great.
It looks good now. Item thirteen? Item fifteen? The council, Wes Williams, I'm big, Ed, Donna, I think we'll go back to discussion for about five minutes, we can, for the arts. Counsel, anybody got any comments, questions?
I would support, supporting public, public arts. I would be in favor of setting up something on a, on an annual basis. I don't have the recommendation right now exactly what source, but if we were to do something on a regular basis, I know we had a number of options for it.
Some type of regular transfer from hotel motel to designated fund.
If that's, if that's the easiest, if we don't have to, if we're able to bank it, if we don't use it all in one year, we're able to build it up.
Could we borrow the money from another fund and pay it back out of the, our money?
In and out of fund, but let's say, credit replacement, or risk fund, yes, you could.
Are you talking about specifically Slicker?
Any of them.
Yes, you could.
There would have to be an expenditure.
In regards to Slicker, you both are talking about paying for this in one lump?
No, by no means, I'm, I'm just speaking strictly for public art in general.
Okay.
Now, speaking, I do have a question on Slicker. Do we know if they've had any offers on that right now?
There was discussion last summer that a museum in Oklahoma was interested in the piece, but I never had confirmation, and there was never anything formal that, that had been...
I have one city and one developer both talking to me now, waiting for your decision.
I've got some information. He said he has one developer and one city...
Have they made a formal bid for it?
No, I told him I wouldn't talk to him until you folks had time to decide what you wanted to, and I thought it was just fair on that basis.
How much does it cost to keep this, this statue up down our year?
Does it cost us anything?
Somebody else pays for it?
David actually maintains it, he's the broker, and so the cleaning of the bronze would be his responsibility.
Even after we buy it?
If we buy it, then it would be our cost, but it's...
Well, what is that, what are we looking at? A hundred dollars a year?
A hundred dollars a year.
A hundred dollars a year? And a little bit of lighting that we have, we have lighting.
On LED?
It's the easiest.
So on point two, growing up in Arizona, Phoenix being one of the leaders of this whole concept of setting aside capital improvement, dollars for art, it's a phenomenal thing, and I, I would love to explore that option. Whether that's quarter percent, half percent, 1%, I don't know, but I would love to explore that as, as an option. On Slicker, I'm not against it, I'd like to maybe see if the community would pitch in on some of that.
Yeah, I'm not...
I agree with Counsel, but...
I'm not in favor of the 325, what was it, 325?
325?
I would be in favor of making an offer.
Do you have an offer in mind?
Well, see, that's to that, why do you want to throw out an offer for 12 years? Nobody's made an offer yet.
It's fine.
Nobody's made an offer to buy yet? I talked to two art, art dealers that builds specifically in western art, one is in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, and Mrs. Salmon, who is, her name is Chris, I should say, is on the board, is on the board of directors of the Museum of Art in Wyoming, in Jackson Hole, and then on the Dallas, and then she got me in touch with them, and then one in Colorado. They said the problem with those things is that they're worth that, but the problem with those things, there's a very limited market for them, we call them its size. There's very few people that can house the piece of art that size, and then most of the time, when you get a piece of art that size, you commission somebody, because you have a particular structure that you want recognized, you have something that you recognize, be it Tom Landy statue, or statue, or whatever, just something. Like Irving, you mentioned Irving, they wanted the Mustang, and that type of thing, but he said something like that, like what you mentioned too, about it going on to, going at sale, at auction, there's very few dealers in those things, because there's just not a market for them, so they said that, you know, their, their evaluations were a lot less, they were under 200,000, because that's, that's what you buy for. They, they gave, showed me pictures of ones that you could buy sooner than that in size, pretty much from 140,000 to 180,000 dollars.
Now, this piece hasn't been on the market for 12 years, though.
No.
It's only been three.
We've had it since 2010.
Okay.
Well, but it was on the market before it moved out here.
No.
It wasn't for sale when they took it down?
I'm the one that took it down, and it's been here for five years, one year in the maintenance yard, and four years in front of the city hall.
Thank you.
So they, the hotel didn't try to sell it?
No, they called me.
It didn't try to sell?
They were told to call me.
He's the broker, it would...
So did you try to sell it?
Yes, I, I've got probably four different mailers I've mailed out, and that's true, people don't buy things off the shelf that are that big. But on the other side, if you wanted to have that made, most people couldn't afford it if it was from the scratch. So when there was, when there becomes a piece like that available from such a notable artist, then it becomes a great value.
Right. And I, I'm, I'm not saying it's not a good value, it's not a great piece of art, I'm saying, I'm just saying it's been a great deal, it's been out here for five years now, and we've got a platform for it right now, right?
Correct.
So if it left, there may be somebody else willing to showcase their art on that platform right now, because that, if, it was my understanding, it's what we were told by staff, that they want to put it there because they thought it was a great showplace to show this, this piece of art, and so they want to bring it here and show it, instead of just sitting in a museum somewhere or something like that.
We were actually hoping the shirt would forget about it, and just give it to, actually, well, we're hoping so.
Well, I see Dave, not as if, yeah, they want to showcase it here, and I can understand it's a good place to showcase it, but there could be other pieces of art that want to be showcased for the same purpose, and it could, it could rotate and change and something and...
I would be comfortable with 100,000 dollars.
100,000? And then staff would kick off a fundraising campaign?
I would just say now, I, I don't have a problem with money, and it's a known quantity, known object we're talking about right now. I don't like public money for public art, because then it gets into what is art, and I don't think the council needs to be judging what's art.
But they will.
I guess they will, that's why I say, that's why I say we don't need to get into that.
Cities use committees.
Yeah, yes, because I...
Well, according to Congress, we have a, a committee that could handle that.
We have an arts board.
Arts board that could handle that.
All right, we gotta go. All right. We're done. We're done.
Some consensus on a policy. So we can bring it back in the form of a policy and then discuss what we're shopping. It's one of those answers, you know, there's no, really, there's no good.
It is seven o'clock, we do have a quorum, a call to City Council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is the invocation led by Councilman Vaughn, and then the pledge of both American and Texas flag led by Deputy Mayor Protem Ferguson. Sorry, back there.
Please stand and join me in a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to the American and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
You almost said an airplane there. I'm almost.
I have a couple of proclamations we'd like to present tonight. If I could have Gary Henderson to come forward with me. Where are you, there you are.
Good to see you, sir. You doing all right?
Good, good to see you.
Wants you to introduce your other guest with you, if you would.
Would love to.
All right. I want y'all to come on up here with us, please.
Thank you, sir.
We're here tonight to do a very special proclamation for one of our agencies here in Denton County that does tremendous work for our people here in Denton County. This money stays here at home to help those sometimes who are in need and less fortunate than we are at times. They've done a great service for our community for, I don't know how many years, who knows how many years Denton County United Way's been here?
Since nineteen fifty-one.
Nineteen fifty-one.
So I was told, I wouldn't worry.
So I was one year old, so. So they've done tremendous work here in our community. They work very diligently with volunteers and getting out and raising funds for the community so that when the, when the needs arise, there is money there to help those that are in need. So with that, tonight, we have representatives here from the Denton County United Way, and I want to read a proclamation, and Gary, I'll ask you to come forward, and he's gonna tell you a little bit more about it and introduce his guest that he has with him. Whereas the United Way of Denton County achieves its mission to improve lives in Denton County by mobilizing community resources that identify and address critical issues in the areas of education, income, and health, the building blocks for a better life. And whereas through the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, United Way of Denton County volunteers, community partners, and staff prepared and filed six hundred and fifty-three federal tax returns this year for low-income households, returning over one million fifty-eight thousand dollars to the local economy and saving Denton County taxpayers one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars in tax preparation fees. And whereas, United Way of Denton County has rallied local organizations and partners to implement Bank of Denton County, creating the opportunity for more than fifty-four thousand on and under-banked low-income households to utilize cost-effective mainstream financial services. And whereas in Denton County, one out of every three students are at risk of dropping out of school, and over eight thousand, two hundred children under the age of five live in poverty. United Way of Denton County and community collaborators rallied to mobilize volunteers through Mentor Denton, a community-wide monitoring mentoring initiative for children and youth. And whereas the senior population in Denton County is expected to double over the next two decades, United Way of Denton County and its partners provide services that allow seniors to remain in their homes and to age with dignity and respect. And whereas, United Way of Denton County and partner agencies, volunteers donated more than twenty-five thousand hours collectively, helping more than fifty-five thousand residents. And whereas donors gave over two point two million dollars this year to support the mission of United Way of Denton County, their twenty partner agencies, and over four hundred other health and human service nonprofits organizations. Now therefore, I, Dean Euclid, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, on behalf of all the Lewisville City Council and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of September two thousand fourteen as Live United Month. In the City of Lewisville, and joins United Way of Denton County donors, volunteers, and partners in calling on all residents to live united and give, advocate, and volunteer, proclaim this fourth day of August two thousand fourteen. Let's get a photo. Gary, this is Gary Henderson, and he's president of the United Way of Denton County, United Way. And he's gonna tell you a little bit more about what they do, how you can be involved, introduce his guest.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to introduce our board chair, Dr. Sherry Dragoo, board member Carol Keier, and immediate past board chair, Don Cobb. I won't take a lot of your time, but there are two folks in this room, or maybe three, maybe four, that I want to thank for this partnership. The partnership between United Way of Denton County and the City of Lewisville is just profound to us, but really, it goes back years and years and years. I want to thank Chief Kerbo for your longstanding support of United Way, certainly Mayor Euclid, your support. Chamber of Commerce Ray Hernandez, thank you for your support with Bank on Lewisville. And Mayor Protem Vaughn, this gentleman is at every one of our Bank on Lewisville meetings along with Ray at the Chamber of Commerce, and it really is that partnership between the city, the nonprofit community, and the Chamber of Commerce that I think is critically important to us, helping our low-income families to avoid being taken advantage of by predatory lenders, payday loans, and frankly, to make use of our mainstream financial service providers who give back to our community. So Ray, Mayor Protem Vaughn, thank you so much for the time you gave us last year, and hopefully this is a deposit on this coming year, we continue to be Bank on Lewisville work.
Look forward to it.
Thank you. Well, thank y'all so much. Let's get one more round of applause.
Ladies, my pleasure.
That was supposed to go to the chief.
As I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, United Way works with many different agencies here in Denton County, and the most important thing I think that we've stressed and made sure of is that this money stays home here in Denton County to help take care of those in need. Okay, our next proclamation is Chief Kerbo, if you'd come forward with me, please, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
This is our police chief, Chief Kerbo, and just wanted to let you know that we have a very special proclamation that is dear to all of our hearts. You know, as you know, our public safety is one of our highest concerns in any city, especially ours. But, you know, sometimes we love our fire department too, chief. You know we love our fire department? And everybody loves a fireman. I mean, kids love a fireman, everybody loves a fireman. But sometimes, you know, you're a little nervous if there's a police officer around. But I've always said it, back when I first got on council, started going to meetings, and they'd tell us about what a good police department we have, and I said, well, it's just because we get out of the way and let them do their job. But if you think about it, when's the only time you don't want to see a police officer? It's when you're doing something that you know might not be quite right. Something that you know you shouldn't be doing. But you know, if you're having to go out to your car through a dark alley, or at night when there's no streetlights around, or you hear somebody scratching on your window, or you get a little nervous, you want that police officer right there. And they are there all the time, putting their lives on the line, above and beyond the call of duty. They're not any better than the firemen, but they don't sometimes get the same friendly smiles and thank yous that they do. So next time you see a police officer, remember, he may have given me a ticket, but thank God he was there when I needed him that night. So with that, I want to give you a proclamation that we have for you, chief. Lewisville Police Department's seventy-fifth anniversary. Whereas public safety in the City of Lewisville is considered critical for residents, business owners, investors, since its incorporation in nineteen twenty-five. And whereas the City Council provided law enforcement services for residents, creating a city marshal position held by M.L. Knight on March tenth, nineteen twenty-five. And whereas on August ninth, nineteen thirty-nine, City Council, seeing the need to expand law enforcement services, voted unanimously to abolish the city marshal position and establish a police department and calling for a police chief to serve the pleasure of the City Council. And whereas, the Lewisville Police Department has grown from just a few police officers in nineteen thirty-nine to one hundred and fifty-four police officers and seventy-seven civilians in two thousand and fourteen. And whereas, the Lewisville Police Department became the twenty-eighth law enforcement agency in the state of Texas, Texas, recognized by the Texas Police Chiefs Association for meeting one hundred and sixty-four best practices in two thousand and ten, and is recognized in two thousand and fourteen, re-recognized in two thousand and fourteen. And whereas, on Saturday, August the ninth, two thousand and fourteen, the Lewisville Police Department celebrates its seventy-fifth anniversary of its creation. Now therefore, I, Dean Euclid, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, on behalf of Lewisville City Council and our citizens, do hereby proclaim August ninth, two thousand and fourteen as Lewisville Police Day, in honor of their seventy-fifth anniversary, as a police department proclaimed this fourth day of August two thousand and fourteen. Mayor and council, and also city staff, thank you so much for the continued support that we always get from y'all to do our jobs. You know, sometimes it's a thankless job, and we don't always get immediate gratification for what we do, but it's the reason why we serve, because we know it's a better purpose. And I please invite the entire community to come out on Saturday, August ninth, eleven thirty to one thirty. We're having a celebratory open house for the whole entire community. Get a chance to tour the facilities. You can even see the jail on this side of the wall. We're cooking hot dogs and having chips and drinks and things like that, so please come out and celebrate with us this Saturday, and thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you about your work.
Yes, sir. And Gary, I accidentally kicked. Next item on agenda is item number one, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit request for auto and boat display sales, excuse me, and repair on six point one five two five acres, zoned light industrial and general business, located at ten twenty-six North Stemmons Freeway, further identified as Lot One, Block A of the Buddy Gregg Motor Homes Edition, and of three variances of the Lewisville City Code, Section six dash one zero three C, two A, access management, access spacing, Section six dash one zero three E, access management, auxiliary lanes, and Section eleven dash ten permissible signs that require a permit, all requested by Homeyer Engineering, Inc., on behalf of the property owner. The applicant is interested in renovating the building and property at ten twenty-six North Stemmons Freeway for use as an auto and boat sales and repair facility.
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe, I have twelve oh six as the address.
What did I say? I beg your pardon. It is twelve oh six.
I think, I believe if I heard you correctly, you were saying ten oh six?
I may have an eye, I apologize. The address of the building and property at twelve zero six, one two zero six North Stemmons Freeway, for use as an auto and boat sales and repair facility. The property has been vacant for approximately three years. The underlying zoning allows for the proposed use subject to approval of a special use permit. The applicant has prepared an engineering site plan and is requesting three variances. A, to allow for driveway spacing of ten point six feet in lieu of the two hundred and thirty feet required to allow the existing driveway to remain at its current location. B, to waive the requirement to provide a deceleration lane in the existing driveway. And C, to allow the existing twelve-foot by forty-foot sign to remain on the property for a maximum of five years or until Tech Dot acquires the property for the I-35 expansion, whichever is earlier, with the following conditions. One, the sign shall only be used as an on-premise sign. And two, after expiration of this variance, the owner must come into full compliance with the city's signed regulations as amended. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval request by fold of four zero at their June third, two thousand and fourteen meeting. Recommendation of staff is that council approve the ordinance and variances as set forth in the caption above, subject to the conditions for on-premise sign use and future compliance with the city's signed regulations as described in the staff report. I do have a card held out here by Mr. Steve Homeyer is here, he does not wish to speak. He isn't supporting, he does not wish to speak, but he's here to answer any questions that we have on this item. Councilman Ferguson.
Yes, move to close the public hearing.
Second. Having a motion by Councilman Ferguson to close the public hearing. A second by Councilman Durham, any discussion?
Just one question.
All in favor? opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Just one question that was raised by Commissioner Steve Byers in P and Z regarding the metal screening fence being painted. There's nothing in this that incorporates that requirement. Is there any guarantee it'll be done?
Councilman, could you, your question was about the metal screening on the, on the west elevation? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, if you look at the P and Z minutes, you'll see a reference to a question raised by Commissioner Stephen Byers.
The answer that was given at the meeting was that it would be incorporated.
Again, and my question is, what guarantee is there? Is there that that will be done? He asked the question, and the response was that it would be painted. My question is, what assurance is there that it will be done?
Yeah. Mayor, could you come to the microphone?
Could we bring him to the microphone so we can hear him?
Pastry, can you answer that?
I'll have to take a look and see, I'm, I was not at that meeting, I'm sorry, but I will take a look and see if there is anything that's in the actual SUP documents that would require them to paint that fence. I don't believe there is anything in the S U P that specifically requires that. The question would be, is it a requirement of the ordinance? Did it be painted? Eric? No, it's not.
It may not be required, but if I remember correctly, in the backup material, the owner stated that he would. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I believe that is the owner that's present that spoke a moment ago, that said that he would.
Okay, thank you.
Well, to Councilman Ferguson's question, though, could you make the motion, if someone was wanting to approve it, could they make the motion with the stipulation that that be added to the conditions?
Since he's.
Can we do that, counselor?
Is, is the fence, is this on? Is the fence part or somehow adjacent to one of the driveways? It's at the back of the property. I don't believe it is adjacent. We couldn't make it a, a condition of granting the SUP, if that's your question.
Say that again?
We couldn't make it a condition of granting the SUP.
Maybe it's a moot point.
I don't understand, if the owner stated he would do it, what the problem would be. I, I don't think that as a businessperson, he would do something contrary to what he stated, probably thinking in advance of other business he might bring before this, this group. I, I myself accept that he will do it. I have no further condition that something be in writing other than his stated objective.
Mr. Ferguson, the applicant and the engineer are here, I think may be available at this point, if you would, if you so wish to call them up, and they can probably show you what they're proposing on the drawing, irregardless of what the conversation was at the P and Z meeting. May be helpful.
Okay, just a second. Counsel, with the public hearing being closed, can we still ask them to come forward and give questions, answer questions? Or do we need to open public hearing back up?
Let's go ahead and reopen it.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
So I'll move to reopen the public hearing.
Having a motion by Councilman Ferguson to reopen the public hearing? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries. Public hearing's reopened. Okay, yes, if we could have the applicant and the engineer please come forward, and Mr. Ferguson, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions, I think, and, Ray?
Yeah. You understand.
Will you just state your name and address for the record, please?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Homeyer, I'm with Homeyer Engineering, we're the civil engineers on this particular project. To answer your question, if you, I believe.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for your help. Okay, anyone want to close it?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Having a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Tierney. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Ferguson.
Yes, move to accept the, the request as stated.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as stated by, per staff's recommendation, and a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Ferguson.
Yes, move to accept the, the request as stated.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as stated by, per staff's recommendation, and a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mayor?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor. Beg your pardon.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for auto and boat, display, sales, outdoor, and repair located on Lot 1, Block A of the Buddy Gregg Motor Homes Edition, containing approximately 6.1525 acres, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is public hearing. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the adoption of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2014 Annual Action Plan, authorization for the city manager to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and acknowledge receipt of the recommended fiscal year 2014-15 City Social Service Agency Fund budget of $170,000 from the CDBG Advisory Committee. An annual action plan must be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, by August 15th, as a requirement to receive Community Development Block Grant CDBG funds of $587,116 in fiscal year 2014-15. The plan has been developed following priorities set by the 2012 Consolidated Plan and the preliminary findings from the 2012 Community Needs Assessment Program. The CDBG Advisory Committee reviewed applications submitted by nonprofit agencies and city departments for projects that addresses HUD national objectives, as well as for the City Social Service Agency Fund. At their June 2014 meeting, the committee, by a vote of 4-0, recommended a draft budget which has been incorporated into the action plan. The plan was made available for a 30-day public commitment period from July 4th through 2014 through August 4th, 2014. Recommendation is that City Council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that the City Council approve the resolution.
We need to close the public hearing first.
I'm sorry?
Close the public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, I make a motion we close the public hearing.
Second. Having a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Vaughn, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Vaughn, please, sir.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution as stated, as stated in the caption above.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve the recommendation as stated above in the caption, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Vaughn, please, sir.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution as stated, as stated in the caption, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the visitor citizen form. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have anyone fill out a speaker card. Next item is the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have any cards filled out, but I would ask that we pull item number five from the consent agenda. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number four, excuse me, item number five.
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Durham to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number five, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Because we're going to need to go into closed session on item number five, we're going to move it to the end of the agenda. So Counselor, if you'll remind me at the end, so I don't forget that, please. Items, let's see. Item seven is consideration of various to Lewisville City Code, Chapter 6, Land Development Regulations Regarding Waiving the Required Engineering Site Plan and Allowing a Modified Site Plan for the Live Bait Outlet Located at 990 North Mill Street as requested by Vaughn Booker, P.E., for G&amp;A Consultants, LLC, representing the owner, Mrs. B.A. Crossley. The property is located at 990 North Mill Street at the southeast corner of Mill Street and future Valley Ridge Boulevard. The current owner took over the site in 1968 and is currently operating a wholesale bait and retail firewood business. The city is in process of extend, in process of extending Valley Ridge Boulevard from Mill Street to College Street and has purchased right-of-way at this location. On May 6, 2014, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the rezoning of the property from agriculture open space to light industrial by a vote of 7-0. On May 7, 2014, and July 2, 2014, the Zoning Board of Adjustment approved variances to allow the existing buildings to encroach into the front yard setback. On June 3, 2014, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the final plat of the property by a vote of 6-0. The owner's desire is to maintain the site, including existing structures as is, and construct two new buildings to replace an existing building to be removed by the future road construction. The current GDO requires an engineering site plan due to the new buildings and a new Recommendation is that City Council approve the variance as set forth in the above caption. Did not have any speaker cards to fill out on this. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve, and a second by Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of various to Lewisville City Code, Section 6-92, paving regarding street escrow related to the proposed Macedonia Ministries GM located at 326 McKenzie Street as requested by Arthur Hunt, Ministry of Finance at Macedonia Ministries. The subject site is a 1.32 six-acre lot zoned light industrial within the McKenzie-Henry Edition located on McKenzie Street just east of the existing Macedonia Ministries. Macedonia Ministries currently owns the vacant property and is in the process of permitting, permitting a new GM. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan subject to the city approval, City Council approval of a variance to waive the required street escrow based on street frontage for the subject lot on McKenzie Street. Recommendation is staff is the council approve the variance as set forth in the above caption. Do have a card filled out here by Mr. Tim Bonner, who'd like to speak. Mr. Bonner? Would you like to speak, sir? You're just here to answer questions? Okay, he's just here to answer any questions that you might have. And also TJ Denson, that is here to answer any questions also. Did not wish to speak, but has any questions. Does the council have any questions? Are either one of the gentlemen? Okay. Councilman Gilmore?
Glad to move to approve as presented.
Second.
These guys had a great groundbreaking here a few weeks ago, and they, they seem to like the name TJ, so that works for me.
We have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman, who was I saying? Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is consideration of a final plat of South Village Edition Lots 1 and 2, Block A, a 4.089 acre parcel zone, Old Town Mix Use 2, located at the southwest corner of Mill Street and Elm Street with a requested variance requested by Josh Barton, EIT and G&amp;A Consultants, LLC, representing the property owner, CADG Mill Street, LLC. The purpose of the plat is to create two, two lots. Lot 1, .643 acres will be developed by Commercial Bank of Texas. Lot 2, 3.446 acres, may be developed as a residential use later by the current property owner. In conjunction with the plat, the applicant has applied for a variance to waive the required street escrow based on street frontage for the subject lot on Elm Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6-0 to approve the final plat and plat, replatted escrow, street escrow variance. Recommendation is that council approve the plat and variance as set forth in the caption above. Excuse me. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the plat and variance as stated.
Second. Having a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as, as stated, and a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Section 15-35, maximum speed limits on specific streets, establishing a maximum speed limit on Mill Street from Oak Ridge Boulevard to Lake Park Road of 35 miles per hour within the city of Lewisville. With the construction of the new head-in parking on Mill Street north of Lake Park Road, staff performed a speed study determining the impact on vehicle speeds on Mill Street near the new roadside parking area. The result of 36 miles per hour for the 85th percentile speed prompted staff to recommend the speed be lowered from 40 to 35 miles per hour on Mill Street from Oak Ridge Boulevard to Lake Park Road. The Transportation Board considered this item during the June 17, 2014 meeting and voted 7-0 in favor of the recommended, recommendation establishing the maximum speed limit as indicated above. Recommendation of staff is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve the ordinance as presented, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Eric?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor. I beg your pardon. I was looking at cards.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter 15, Section 15-35 of the Lewisville City Code, by establishing a new speed limit on Mill Street from Oak Ridge Boulevard to Lake Park Road, providing a penalty clause, providing for severability, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor. Item 11 is consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 4, Buildings and Building Regulations, and Chapter 5, Fire Prevention and Protection, by deleting the requirement for automatic sprinkler system in attics, in attics for R4 occupancies. The city of Lewisville has locally amended the International Building and Fire Codes by requiring fire sprinklers in all areas, including attic spaces of hotels, motels, which is R1 occupancies, apartment houses, R2 occupancies, and single-family dwellings that house and provide care for elderly clients, which are R4 occupancies. These proposed ordinance changes will delete the requirement of providing the fire sprinkler protection in the attics of R4 occupancies while maintaining the requirement for R1 and R2 occupancies. Recommendation is that, recommendation of staff is that council approve the ordinance as set forth. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I move to adopt the ordinance per the recommendation.
Having a motion by Councilman Durham to adopt the ordinance as recommended.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 4, Buildings and Building Regulations, and Chapter 5, Fire Prevention and Protection, by deleting the requirement for automatic sprinkler systems in attics in R4 occupancies, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know there was a little confusion on my part, so maybe for the folks at home watching this, to be clear that this does not remove the requirement for the habitable space to be sprinkled. It's only for the attic space of these types of homes that get converted, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Item 12 is tabled item, consideration of an ordinance changing a section of Cowan Avenue by making necessary improvements and restricting all vehicular travel, retaining exclusive dominion, control, and jurisdiction over the street segment as public right-of-way, and providing an effective date as requested by staff. This item was tabled at the July 7, 2014 City Council meeting until the August 4, 2014 Council meeting. Due to the proposed extension of Valley Ridge Boulevard from Mill Street to College Street, including the new At Gray Crossing over the DCTA commuter rail, a closure of North Cowan Avenue to vehicular traffic, traffic is proposed from Mill Street to just north of the KCS Railroad overpass. A crossing agreement between the city and DCTA is being negotiated and will require approval by both entities. As a policy, the DCTA requires closure of an existing crossing any time a new crossing is requested. The existing rail crossing on North Cowan Avenue is very close to the proposed crossing on Valley Ridge Boulevard, so DCTA has specified the closure of the Cowan Avenue rail crossing in exchange for the proposed Valley Ridge crossing. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve as presented, and a second by Councilman Vaughn. I do want to state that I want to thank all of the, the residents, the owners and tenants that are in that area. Thank you so much for being patient with us, working with us, helping us to figure out the best way possible to alleviate any inconveniences that you might have. We hope we were able to satisfy as much as possible. This is something beyond our control. As we stated in our meetings, the Federal Red Row Administration and DART and DCTA has to work, excuse me, work with those people and abide by their rules and guidelines that we do too. We're not allowed to deviate from those. So we want to certainly appreciate all the work and effort that you did in working with us and getting this thing accomplished. Counselor?
Was there a motion? This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, changing a section of Cowan Avenue as described herein, the street segment, by making necessary improvements and restricting all vehicular traffic, retaining exclusive dominion, control, and jurisdiction over the street segment as a public, as public right-of-way, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13 is a tabled item. Consider and act upon adoption of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way and fee simple for the construction, access, and maintenance of certain street improvements, including a cul-de-sac on Cowan Avenue generally located at the KCS Railroad intersection, and to undertake all associated drainage, slope, and utility improvements. The project determining the public necessity of such acquisition, authorizing the appointment of an appraiser and negotiator as necessary, authorizing the city manager or her designee to establish, excuse me, establish just compensation for the property rights to be acquired, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take steps necessary to acquire the needed property rights in compliance with all applicable laws and resolutions, and authorizing the city attorney or her designee to institute condemnation proceedings to acquire the property if purchase negotiations are not successful, providing for repealing, savings, and severability clauses, and providing for an effective date. This item was tabled at the July 7, 2014 Council meeting until the August 4, 2000 meeting. Council meeting on December 17, the City Council approved a change order to the Valley Ridge Boulevard Project Service Agreement to design certain improvement and changes, including design of cul-de-sac to North Cowan and Mill Street approximately 60 feet north of the center of the KCS Railroad. Recommendation is that staff, recommendation of staff is that council adopt the resolution as set forth in the caption above by using the following motion, which is prescribed by Texas Government Code, Section 220.053. I can't remember, was that TJ? Councilman Gilmore?
Sure, I'll read it. Mayor, I move that the City of Lewisville, Texas, adopt the resolution described in Agenda Number 13 and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the property described and depicted in Attachment 1 attached to the resolution. Said description and depiction being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for the construction, access, and maintenance of certain street improvements and changes on Cowan Avenue, including a cul-de-sac generally located at the KCS Railroad intersection and Avenue, including a cul-de-sac generally located at the KCS Railroad intersection and other associated drainage, slope, and utility improvements.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? Councillor? You have to, you don't have to read that. I'm sorry.
Mayor, and we do this legally because, not because we are doing eminent domain. In fact, we are doing everything we can to purchase this property that is needed on the fair market value.
Correct.
Okay.
This is just a kind of a safe deal we have to do by state law now in case we cannot come up to agreement. We have to state this publicly. Thank you, councillor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is considering to approve a resolution accepting official reports, calling a public hearing, and authorizing notice of such hearing regarding a preliminary service and assessment plan and proposed assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six. City Council approved a resolution on May 6, 2013, authorizing the creation of Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District, PID, Number Six. A preliminary service and assessment plan and proposed assessment role have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the PID along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. A resolution is required to accept the reports, call a public hearing for August 18, 2014, and authorize notice of such hearing. Recommendation is that council consider and approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve the resolution as stated.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider, item 15, consideration of upcoming public hearing dates for the city's budget process. The annual budget workshop is scheduled for August 9. The currently approved budget calendar has a first public hearing being held on August the 18th. This is enough time to meet the state requirement for notices regarding public hearings. However, due to newspaper deadlines, it will not provide enough time for the standard seven-days notice normally provided before a public hearing. In order to provide plenty of time for advertising the upcoming public hearings on the budget and tax rate, a special city council meeting to hold the first public hearing is needed. Staff recommends August 25 as the date of the first public hearing. Recommendation, council scheduled August 25 as the first public hearing on the 2014-2015 budget and tax rate. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion that we accept the recommendation as stated?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to accept, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna, we're gonna do reports, and then we're gonna go into closed session, and then we'll come back and do item five. Is that okay? Or can we not do that?
So, you're gonna do item five after reports?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Is that okay? That way, some people can, if they need. Okay, that brings us down to reports.
No reports.
Nothing? Asia, my goodness. Bob will have something, I'm sure. Nothing, Bob? I bet you Chief Tittle's got something. What? Well, Linda's got something, I know. Don't let me down, Chief Kerbo.
Nothing, mayor.
Thought you were having a big party Saturday. Remember, everybody's invited Saturday from what time?
11:30 to 1:30.
11:30 to 1:30, the entire city. 100,000 hot dogs and drinks be waiting. All right. Carol?
We did have more rain, and we've actually, the lake has come up two full feet, so we're only five feet below conservation. And we actually were still getting a little runoff today. It actually clicked up a couple of, a couple of hundreds today, so I know up where I am, I got a lot of rain, so.
But I heard.
We're breathing a lot easier this August.
Good. We're blessed, yes, we are. Gina? How much money we got in the bank? Brenda? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you'd have that off the top of your head.
A lot.
A lot, that's good. A lot. Just enough to get us by, right, Brenda? Thank, thank you for all you do. Ms. Ferris, sir. Ms. Ferris, I want to give a special thank you to you and your staff and to Donna for working with, several meetings with the people on Cowan, as I know it was disruptive to them, they've been there for a number of years, but thank you for being so patient and understanding and just really kind to those people. It meant a lot to them, and several of them said that, and we appreciate what you did for them. We thank you, sir. Ms. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
Yes, mayor, I want to recognize and thank the Primrose School of Old Orchard. This past week, they, the students and the teachers put together a little, a little drive, and they dropped off over 1,000 pounds of food and treats to our animal shelter. And as most of us probably know, that our animal shelter is always in need of donations such as food and treats and blankets. Blankets are always a good one that the animal shelter needs as well. So, thank you to the Primrose School of Old Orchard.
Great. Councilman Gilmore?
So, to follow up on that, on August 16, we're having an Empty the Shelter Adoption Event. This is going to be region-wide, but please come to the Lewisville Animal Shelter from 10 to 5 on the 16th. All adoption fees will be waived. And we got the sixth member of my family here a year ago now from the shelter, and we'll be bringing her down there as well, so maybe she'll get a friend, who knows?
That's great. Ms. Barron?
This Saturday will be the budget workshop. It's certainly open to the public. We encourage everyone to come out as we review the proposed budget for the FY 1415 fiscal year.
Yeah, it starts at 9:00 a.m., I believe?
That is correct, sir.
And then we'll break in time for a little lunch, go over and visit with our, our police department for celebrating their 75th anniversary.
Absolutely.
Great. And that is held not here at this city hall, but over the city annex.
The municipal annex, community room.
Right, right next door to the police station, so that'll be awesome. And thank you very much for the reports you're giving us on, excuse me, the park, excuse me, the park across the street. I understand it's still on schedule to be there August, September 11.
September 11, yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your work, you're Mr. Backus, both. Councilman Ferguson?
Nothing, mayor. No, I'm just messing with you.
I was gonna say, what?
Well, everybody else said nothing, I thought it'd be fun if I did. So, MCL Grand, we have a stage show, Illusions, August 9, one show presented by David Knight. DFW Dance Work has two shows on August 15 and 16, presented by Simple Sparrow Dance Company. We've got a couple of public events. MCL Healthy You continues. This one is, "We Raised You Right, Comma, Right?" question mark. You have to read it to get the joke, I guess, but August 14 is the date on that one, and the Visual Art League continues its acoustic jam sessions every Friday night. In the art gallery, we've got Fresh Ideas from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Tuesdays through Saturdays and always during public performances. And in the, it's also in the gallery, I guess, it says in the gallery, but usually it's in the hallway. Photography exhibit opens August, oh, I see, it's a new exhibit. I have to read the notes first. New exhibit will open August 16 with photography, and again, that'll be in the gallery, and that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
You know, I know I teased you about that, but I really do appreciate you giving those reports on the MCL and all the activities that we have and, and Parks and Arts, and I appreciate that, because it's, it's good information for people, so we thank you for staying on top of that.
My pleasure.
Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, mayor.
Councillor? Julie? Also, once again, we appreciate you. Glad to have you back, sir. We missed you the last meeting, but it's good to have you back. We thank you for what you do. Now, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.07, can't we do 52 at the same time? Or can we not?
Well, consultation with attorney isn't listed under closed. I mean, we can't, I think it'd just be cleaner if we just did item 5, but we closed.
And then come back?
Come back.
Okay.
Let them leave.
All right. We're gonna go into a special session on item 5 in consultation with attorney. We convene back into regular session, and we'll go with item 5. Item 5 is approval of the Lake Park Golf Course Concession Agreement Assignment Consent from CLP Lake Park Golf, LLC to CF Lake Park Arcus, LLC. Approval of Lake Park Golf Course Concession Agreement, Estoppel Certificate, and Authorization for the City Manager to Execute the Agreements. The owners of the Lake Park Golf Course, CLP Lake Park Golf, LLC, have entered into a purchase and sale agreement with CF Lake Park Arcus, LLC. A concession agreement assignment consent must be approved along with concession agreement Estoppel Certificate for the sale to be completed along with the approval of the core engineers. The operation and management of the course will remain in place with Eagle Golf continuing in that role, so the change will be somewhat seamless. Recommendation is council approve the agreement as set forth in the above caption. I do have a card here filled out by Andrew Crosson. He does not wish to speak, but is here to answer any questions if anybody has them. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, Aurelio Durarte et al. versus City of Lewisville, Texas, case number 13-40806, United States Court of Appeals for Fifth Circuit, and Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will now convene into closed session. We'll convene back into regular session, councillor. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.